...experience of the horror action that took place there and across the nation. And I'd like if we could all stand up a moment and have a moment of silence to pray that this type of thing stops happening. I'm in. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Good evening, good board members. I have opening exercises today and I'm down here because I'm going to start the video. I'd like to just show you in the audience a short video of a wonderful student that we have in our school system and then we'll introduce her here in a minute.
This is News 6 at 11, getting results.
It's only been a few days since the Grammys and tonight there's a new Grammy hopeful in our midst.
Yeah, one local teen has her ambition set pretty high and she says she wants to be the next Taylor Swift. News 6's Louis Bolden met up with her after a recent performance at Disney.
Meet Sophie Noel. She's a normal teenager at high school honor roll student during the week. And country music sensation on the weekends.
How did you start?
Well, I was two.
We have that little two and a half year old belting the chorus band there.
Hopelessly devoted to you was like my jam and my parents were like, damn, she can sing.
And she hasn't stopped since. These days she's definitely graduated from performing at home. Sophie recently performed covers and some of her own original songs at the House of Blues in Disney Springs and even managed to pick up a few more fans.
I prefer to be the next Taylor Swift, honestly.
Talk about your writing process.
Well, most of them are about boys that I've liked and normally doesn't end well, so that comes up with a good song.
That sounds very Taylor Swift to me, writing about breakups.
Yeah.
Learning piano, guitar, and now the violin, Sophie's parents helped encourage and develop her talent through the years. And now the high school sophomore says she is completely at ease doing live performances, even in front of nineteen thousand people. You might also be able to find the sixteen year old on TV soon. She has written music for two upcoming television shows. Filmmaker Matthew Gano of MG Cinema thought Sophie's style would fit perfectly with the show he's directing for Showtime and the Civil War era series he's working on for another major network.
Yeah, she's really good. She's actually on Media Music for Wild West, like they go.
For now Sophie's working on maintaining the perfect balance between normal teen and future Grammy Award winner. Ultimately, she hooks her music touches and inspires those who listen to it.
Like that song Hold Me Close. It could be about anything, like a soldier leaving, maybe coming back, like whether you miss somebody, they don't necessarily, it doesn't have to be about a boy. Like people can relate to it in different ways. Put their own story on it.
If you'd like to see Sophie perform live, she'll be singing the National Anthem at an upcoming.
Well, we don't have to wait for her to perform live because she's going to do that in a minute. She is a Citrus High School Rising junior. She is a member of Breeze and she is a Citrus County girl, I think, through and through. I think that video certainly shows it. So I am proud to welcome to our school board today Sophie Nicole.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sophie Noel and I'm going to sing Proud Mary by Creedence Blue Water Revival and the National Anthem. (Music) 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 (Music)
Remain standing for the pledge. I...
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderdogged and invisible with liberty, meaning and justice for all.
Sophie, thank you so very much. That was so beautiful.
And Sophie, you couldn't have picked a better song than Proud Mary. Almost had to tie us in the seat to keep us from getting up and dancing. Thanks so very much. I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please. Keep it from him.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carries four zero. Thank you. Citizen comments? These are items that are on the agenda. We have any citizen comments? Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mr. Kennedy to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carries four zero. Thank you, guys. Thanks, Sophie.
Thank you.
The donations?
Yes, and we have received a large donation on our agenda for, it was approved on the consent agenda, it's for $25,000 donation to Citrus High School from United Way, the ACT program that we recognized as a last name.
And that brought back a lot of good grades.
Yes, very positive.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we go into educational services. I think that's presented that one. Mr. Muller?
Are there any questions on that? I think that was Mr. Dodd who wanted that forward for...
Okay.
Yes.
I make a motion, oh, did you need... Yes. Oh, you need to do your thing first, I'm sorry, Doug.
Yes. Madam Chair, prior to discussing this matter, I would like to inform the board and the general public that I perceive a potential conflict of interest in that my wife, Laura Dodd, is a part-time employee of Achievement Rehab and as such I will abstain from voting pursuant to Florida Statute 112.3143 as I perceive a potential conflict in this matter.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we reapprove the financial impact to the district which now includes IDEA funding source tied to the contract with achievement rehabilitation through therapeutic intervention for physical, occupational, and speech-language therapies.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mrs. Bryant, to reapprove the financial impact of the district which now includes IDEA funding source tied to the contract with achievement rehabilitation and therapeutic intervention for physical, occupational, and speech-language therapies. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carries three zero, with one of the stated by Mr. Dodd. Next. We move to approve the agreement between the School Board of Citrus County Schools and private agencies.
I move to approve the agreement between the School Board of Citrus County Schools and private agencies.
Second. It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the agreement between the School Board of Citrus County Schools and private agencies.
I have a discussion question. Yes. I wanted to just make sure that I was clear, that the board too was clear in regard to the contract itself, that this is actually a blank contract that we are going to approve for nurses, private duty nurses, which I spoke with Mrs. Alagretta and we discussed it and I'm clear on the purpose for the need for us to have some things in writing, but I was a little concerned because I felt like the board should not be, have not approved an open contract. I mean, obviously, this may not be a company, it could be an individual if they worked in a private setting. So as I read through the contract, it talks about companies, you know, blank and its officers and police agents, you know, everything in here, all the blanks deal with companies, but not only how do we account for individuals, but aren't we, is this a new precedent for us to approve an open contract that basically the chairman signed or will agree to sign, I guess is what we're saying, for any company that comes forth? I mean, is there some...
Yeah, we have another contract like this, it's basically approved in the form of a contract. We have a contract, a blank one like this where under, I can't remember the exact statute number, but it's a student that has an IEP and the parent wants to have an individual. It's by statute, certain people that can come in and observe the child at the school, they can't observe them in class, but they can come to the school and talk to them and they set out some things as far as, you know, according to the principal's schedule and when they, he can designate the time and the place and different things like that, but by statute that they are allowed to come and observe students with IEPs and we have a blank form for that because we don't know when that's going to occur and usually they work for some behavior specialists and some other types of things, they generally work for a company. So this contract right here, because students with IEPs that require 24-hour nursing or nurses to be present during the day, it's part of their IEP, you know, we either have to provide it at the cost of the school district or a lot of times they receive the private, the nurse based upon Medicare, Medicaid, or some other type of insurance. And so because those people are coming into the schools, they're going to work, I would assume mainly for a corporation or for some type of entity. So when they come, they, you know, we want to set some ground rules and they have to follow when they arrive, you know, protect the other students for their rights.
The document is to protect the school district, not for them. I mean, so this is to protect the school district, so we have a tool in place so that, because without it, I have to provide services the day they enroll and I don't know, we could have a student enroll first day of school that requires a full-time nurse, I don't know that.
You can have a student transfer tomorrow that has a full-time nurse and if, you know, we would have to provide the services if we don't allow the, their nurse to attend school with them. So we drafted this for our protection so that make sure they carry insurance, protect, you know, identify us and hold us harmless and we're not responsible for any medical treatment or anything else that is done, that is strictly by doctor's orders, you know, and carried out through the nurse and they have to...
And this wouldn't encumber any money on the board's part, this is not for us to pay a contractor, it's for somebody that's already being paid by the parent.
Background screen.
Yes.
So that we can license, you know, carrying a valid, you know, license in order for...
So if a student enrolls in school and they're going to be starting and these things have not been done, and that's in the contract, the commercial liability, general liability, all the things that are in here are not completed, then that nurse or that company would not be able to be with the child.
That's correct and then we would have to provide that same health service through one of our RNs until we were able to either get them, get that resolved or get another RN handled or hired and then it would become our responsibility.
But I was under the impression that this was, these are private nurses, these are, we're not obligated to provide the nurses for these students.
We will be if it's, if it's on their IEP and they're required to have that, I guess we would. We have students that are wheelchair bound, they, you know, have to, they tracheomies, those things have to be cleaned, they have to be provided, you know, almost 24-hour contact, you know, medical care. So if they don't have a private, for lack of a better term, a private duty nurse or someone, a nurse that's being provided through insurance or Medicare or Medicaid, then it's our responsibility to make sure that those doctors orders are taken care of.
And Medicaid in most cases.
It's Medicaid in most cases, we just expand it a little bit for, you know, in case it's a health insurance that someone has and is in there paying for.
Just to share with the board that this is the private duty nurse that's with that student 24/7. This nurse, 99% of the time is the same nurse that provides those services at the home, but Mr. Bradshaw explained that very well and Mr. Dodd, we had a conversation where if a student does come and needs specific medical needs as per the doctor's office and the parent has not secured a nurse through Medicaid, we do two things. One, we immediately have to provide that service for the student with one of our RNs being there on campus and we also work with the parent in case that parent, for whatever reason, doesn't know that they can apply through Medicaid for these services.
So if there were ever to be a company that has a fraudulent claim against it, basically the board is, the board is approving their contract in a blank form and how would we protect ourselves if a healthcare provider that had a bad professional reputation were to provide these services, how would we protect ourselves?
Well, this protects us because they agree to identify us and hold us harmless for anything else, but if they have issues like that, then they're probably, they're not going to be a Medicaid provider, Medicaid's not going to pay them, or Medicare or a private insurance company, if we find out about it and they don't know, then we have an obligation to report them.
This is sort of just like, you know, what kind of, you said, a contract or sale of a house, you go down, everything's blank, you fill it in yourself, it's sort of like, this seems to me sort of like that, where it's blank and you fill in what you need to fill in.
Right. I mean, what Medicaid does is they contract out with certain providers, you know, have nurses that are employees of them and that those nurses provide the services, so...
And Medicaid pays them.
Correct. We do not pay anything, but because we want them to be background screened, licensed, you know, all of those types of things. If it's our nurses, we don't need anything, but then we have to incur the cost on them.
And the reason though we're doing it in a blank format is for time, for time factor, is that the big, big reason? Yeah, I mean, if we had a student enrolled tomorrow and then we, you know, we wouldn't be able to bring it back to the next board meeting and then, you know, there's, if we were in school in session right now, there's a month could go by before that student, we could have those services provided to that student, so, and that would be unacceptable in the ESE world. We, I mean, if they wanted to start that student the next day or that day, we have to have those services available. We don't get a race period, hopefully what will end up happening is we'll know what the providers are and I would imagine in this area, there's always certain providers that we can get a contract.
There are two providers, we've been working with in the past and they both are aware that this is a possibility, so we will have everything in the front and even prior to...
And they've both seen this contract?
Not verbatim, because I wanted the board to see it first, but Mrs. Cornrally and I spoke with them and told them what was in it and they've done that with other counties as well.
Please sign it, bring it back and have that contract approved, I'm just worried about somebody moving in tomorrow.
And so...
If they have to sign it, they bring it back to the board.
And so the legal standing on this is that the superintendent does not have the power to allow this to take place before it comes to the board? I mean, couldn't the superintendent...
Well, we're gonna, if it is, if we have to provide the medical services, you know, we're gonna do it because it's part of their IEP and so, you know, if we have to have one of our nurses with them, but it's more of a comfort level for that child and that family if they have something that's been with them before, but the, we will make sure that the services are provided to the board's own contracts.
Right, I guess, you know, it's just, for me, it's just the principle of the point, we're approving an open contract for groups or people that...
Well, we're approving the form.
Correct.
Just the form.
So what's the agreement? Doesn't the super, doesn't the chairperson sign it?
Not today.
Okay, when will the chair sign it?
Typically, we come in, if there's a, if there's something that needs to be signed, we get a call, it's a chair to come in and sign those documents.
So basically, we're the chairperson to have the authority to sign the contract.
But that's, but we do that with forms all the time.
Well, I know, but they, their forms have been approved by the board, they correct or...
No, actually, the forms don't even have to come to the board. Forms don't, forms are, even though that they're used, they're not a contract, but the only reason this is coming, I believe, to us is because it's a contract and so the, we're as a body approving the authority of the chair to be able to do that.
And then we create the contract by information purchases, except...
Our board group is the same thing, I've got some of these contracts laying around my house. They're blank, pretty much.
Our contract, our board contract, so it gets a standard.
So this, so we're approving this agreement, I mean, and I know there's forms that, that the chairperson may have to sign, but this is truly a contract, this is something that we're entering into.
Bring the form with the contract and I'll give it to the chairperson.
So if the board votes to approve this open contract, then the chair would sign it once it comes from Mrs. Alagretta's office, once they've, they've met all the requirements in the contract, it would be sent over to our office and the chair would sign it.
Yes, sir. All in favor? Aye. Close, carries four zero. Thank you. Next, we have Golden Roden.
Good afternoon. I am asking approval for you to approve the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the Golden Roden.
I have a problem. What was that thing that I had on here? I'm waiting on my phone when you send it to me, now it's not here. I have a problem, Matt.
Yeah, I move, I'm sorry, I move to approve the personnel for instructional and support recommendations as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd to approve the personnel information as recommended by the superintendent.
Oh, there it is, there's Sandra Hamilton's name on here. And support.
Any for this?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carries four zero. Thank you.
The second item is to ask approval of Brian Lancaster to be named principal of Lucanto Middle School with a start date of July 13th.
Just graduate high school.
Yes, you can.
You're gonna suck.
Do the advanced programs.
I move that we approve Brian Lancaster as the principal of Lucanto Middle School effective July 13th, 2016.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Dodd to approve Brian Lancaster as the principal of Lucanto Middle School effective July 13th, 2016. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, carries four zero.
The next agenda item is to ask approval of Alex Stubenbort to be named the assistant principal at Lucanto High School with a start date of July eighteenth.
I approve, I move to approve Alex Stubenbort, assistant principal of Lucanto High School.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Bryan, seconded by Mr. Dodd to approve the appointment of Alex Andrew Stubenbort, assistant principal of Lucanto High School, effective July the eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, carries four zero, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Would you approve the minutes?
Second. Thank you, Regine. It's been moved by Ms. Bryan, seconded by Mr. Kennedy to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close, carries four zero, thank you. Attorney Michael Maddis?
Yes, I have a couple of things, developments, so I want to recall another attorney-client executive conference pursuant to Florida Statute two eight six point zero one one print, a closed print. I'd like an attorney-client executive conference to gain advice concerning pending litigation between the Citrus County School Board and TC individually and on behalf of JD, case number five, colon fifteen dash C V dash five dash zero C dash three zero P R L. Such amount of the meeting shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. Meeting shall be scheduled for July twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen at three thirty-five P M. Person's presence shall be R. Wesley Bradshaw, Terry Harmon, possibly telephonically attorneys for the Citrus County School Board, superintendent Sandra Sam Hill, board members. I believe it was Brian will be here, but I'm gonna go ahead and announce her in case her plans change. Virginia Bryan, Thomas Kennedy, Linda Powers, and Doug Dodd. Entire session shall be recorded by a certified court reporter. No portion of the meeting shall be off the record. Upon the conclusion of any litigation, that, that session will be made to the public. Any other exemptions such as like, education, law, privacy.
Let me mention one name. My, the last time we had a, had a closed session, the person recording said they had trouble hearing us up here because of the noise, I think, from the projector. I don't know, because of the noise in that area.
If it's the projector, we could turn it off, you know, just shut down the system.
Asking if we could address that.
Is there a way to have microphones on in here, but not broadcasting out there?
Yes.
Is there a volume switch on it?
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily automatically broadcast out there, so.
So then that would be a good submission.
Maybe I'll just remind y'all to speak up a little bit too.
Who are you looking at?
Like I say, we.
This is a group days, it wasn't.
We could turn the projector off, but if it's air handler.
Well, still. We don't need to turn that off.
Flip the switch on the handler.
That's all I had, thank you very much.
Mr. Mullin? Let me break you just a second. Mr. Murray is with us for a very long period of time. Well, again, I wanted to offer our condolences to him, his wife's brother test, he's kind of going to go, planning out to California, so our condolences.
Yeah, I really have a question, and more than, than I have anything, more maybe if, if assistant superintendent might allow Ms. Wilson to come forward, because I've just got some questions that we keep getting asked in the community or referred to, and Ms. Wilson, maybe you can just clarify them. There seems to be a lot on social media these days on some misinformation of numbers, even recently, as early as today, there was some postings saying that we don't, we should have never even asked the public for putting a sales tax out there because we're getting all this extra money. One of the things that they're saying is that we have a school millage rate of twenty-three points, or twenty-three mils. What is our current rough millage rate, if you could?
For fifteen sixteen, our millage rate is, our required local effort is four point nine one eight.
And?
Our discretionary is point seven four eight, and our capital is one point five. And I apologize, I didn't have that added together for me.
That's okay. I think it's about seven and change.
Seven point one six six.
That sounds about right.
Okay.
And of the millage rate, aside from capital and discretionary, does this board make that decision as to the other millage rate?
No, that's given to us by the state, the Department of Education, in our Florida Educational Finance Program calculations.
And that's decided from the budget that's passed by the legislators. One of the things that's said is that we had a increase in property values this year.
Yes, we did.
And that we got a lot of money from that because it increases how much we get. So how much more money did we get this year?
This, for next year.
Or for next year's budget as a result of it.
Compared to this year, we actually will be losing a little over a million dollars.
Well, that doesn't make sense. Where, how, how would we be losing money if we, if we actually had an increase in taxable value?
Our millage rate is being decreased as of right now by point two one nine.
Well, who did that? I didn't vote for that.
The state of Florida Department of Education did.
So it would be fair to say that we have had a reduction in millage rate as a result of the taxable value increase, is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson, thank you, that's, that's really what I needed. And board members, I will just tell you, there is a lot of misinformation that is being out there. I'm sure you guys are hearing this in, in circles as well, but.
It's political season.
It is. And, and it's sad that, I'm not sure why, that if you don't want to vote for it for the facts, that's fine, but don't mislead facts, don't misgive facts.
Don't lie.
Don't lie. If you have questions, I know that our staff is always available. Ms. Wilson, I've been burning up the phone and messaging lately because trying to go, is this true? Is this the case? So, and I appreciate your graphs have been so helpful, and they are really the same graphs that come right off of our budget. There was another comment made that says, we don't, we're not putting out our budget anymore. We've removed our budget from the webpage, we're hiding it. Where can that budget be found on your webpage?
It's on the webpage, right on the finance tab.
So go to finance department, and then you have, I believe, a big button there that says budgets.
Budget, yes, sir.
I think you have all of the budgets there from previous years as well.
Yes, sir.
And work plan is also included in the budget.
We do a work plan?
And that's.
Do we pass that every five years?
And our, our actuals are out there too, our annual financial reports at the end of the year, and our audits are out there also.
That is another piece of misinformation that's been put out there, saying that we don't have a work plan, we just sort of, you know, whatever we want to do, we do. And there's a specific five-year work plan that's on, on our webpage, you can go to find out what we're doing.
It's a specific five-year and a ten-year, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, they get more general as you go out, which is common in any type of work plan, and you can predict what's gonna happen in twenty years. But we do, we do somewhat project what type of work that we think will be expected in twenty years.
And I think that that work plan is, is sent to the Board Counting Commission following when we pass the budget every year, both electronically, as well as I believe we follow it up with a hard copy as well.
Yes.
That was all I had, but I just felt like I wanted to make sure I got that out there.
And Ms. Wilson, just in summary, property values can continue to go up, but once the state decides what our budget is, that is our budget, it's not going to change. Property values can change, our budget is not gonna change.
Correct.
So there's a misconception out there that when property values go up, we get a win of all the money. That's not true. Once that's decided, we're only gonna get what, what they told us we were gonna get way back a few months ago when we presented it to you. It's not gonna change.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mullin, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
I appreciate Chair recognizing the incident in Dallas today, and we started the meetings, and thank you for that. I know that's on our hearts and throughout this country. So we definitely appreciate the work of our law enforcement officials, and we've got a good school resource officers, and I hope that, you know, we can teach kids about the respect and admiration of our, our protectors. So I'm proud of those men and women we have serving in this county, and hopefully there will be some peace that we can continue to pray for our country and for the peace of our country. I would like to just review, I know we had the big news item this week with the school grades, and I think that there could be some questions, or I know there have been, but I've already talked a little bit about, but I just wanted to touch base with the board and with Mr. Mullin, I guess, on the fact that there were only three districts in the state, correct, that made an A, an A grade this time. And so the bar obviously has been set higher, and I think it's true for what superintendent said, is that I don't think our teachers worked any less, I think their students did work quite hard and diligently.
Or our students.
Oh, our students, that's true. So we appreciate their efforts, and we recognize their work. But just going forward now, I know a lot of it deals with what they refer to as the student gains or increase in performance. As we look ahead, obviously, we want to get back to that A, A rating. And I think, Mrs. Powers, you said that we were gonna be the best district in the state that would.
Yeah, we're gonna be the one.
That's what we're, we want to be number one, and I agree, I mean, we're always shooting the best.
Mr. Dodd's competitive. That's right. We're gonna get there.
We got a great team here, and that's, that's our goal, though, right? And that's what we want, these schools to be the best. And we want the public to realize that in turn with that, in order for our schools to be the best, we have to have the funding available, dealing with capital projects, dealing with the things that we need to keep our schools safe and secure, and our schools maintained, and not having to use our general operating money to pay for those things. So I think we all see that, and we have to communicate that to the public. But I wanted to touch on the performance increase portion, and just kind of the, the plan going forward for next year, you know, what we're doing as far as achieving that A rating again, and what, what you all see as the possibility maybe going forward with the information you may have that I, I don't know yet, but what is the state saying, what are you all looking at?
But the state's saying very little. I mean, our, my staff is taking the data and has been working on breaking it down into the different areas. We're looking at math, social studies, science, I mean, they're all, they, they all have their, their own, carry their own weight, they're all part of the grade. One of the areas that we need to work on is improving the learning gains in the lowest twenty-five percent of our students. That was an area that we did not do well in, and those typically are struggling, struggling learners, and, and trying to get a year's worth of growth out of them. The measurement of learning gains is much different than it's been in the past, and we're still trying to figure out, with some help from the state, how exactly they're calculating that. And the best that we can tell is that, you know, in the past, if a student was still, was proficient from one year to the next, from third grade to fourth grade, they were proficient being a level three or above, and that was considered a learning gain. Now, if they're a level four or five in third grade, they're expected to be better next year in fourth grade. So if they're a level four in third grade, and a level four in fourth grade, they didn't make any learning gains. They don't count that year, that third grade to fourth grade as a learning gain, which they, in the past, they would have been. So for our staff to fully understand what, how they're calculating the learning gains is, is gonna be a task. We've made some, some of our schools have done a great job in social studies and improving there, some have done a great job in science. You know, one thing I'll point out is, you know, Academy Environmental Science has traditionally always been an A school since they've been receiving a grade, but because of the way it's graded this year, and the difficulty in making those points in learning gains, they're also a B school, which is the first time, I think, since they've been getting that rate. Yeah, so that just kind of puts it in perspective. Yes, we, we anticipated that the grades would be low, that doesn't mean that we were happy that, you know, the, where they were at. We definitely are identifying areas that we need to work on. You know, for us, it's more about, we want all of our students to succeed regardless of where the grade falls out, it's about the students succeeding and, and providing them with the best educational opportunities that they have across the board, came through adult education, and so that's why our staff breaks it down individually, whether it's social studies, science, and ELA, math. We had many successes that we're very proud of, in some areas that we've already had plans in place for next year, second post, our secondary level, English Language Arts is one of, we're looking for an initiative, really next year.
But, Mr. Mullin, one of the things I think that's, that's frustrating about us, and we talk, we've had this in our trainings at the Florida School Board Association, is if my daughter gets a four in ELA in sixth grade, then I'm really happy, four's pretty decent. And she gets a four in seventh grade, unless she got points higher than the four score in sixth grade, even though the tests are different, one's a sixth grade ELA, one's a seventh grade ELA, it doesn't matter, a four is not a four the next year. A four has to be higher than the previous year's four. So while as parents, we may be sitting there going, yes, good work, you got a four, as teachers, we may be saying, boy, that was great, because it's harder curriculum this year too. We don't get any counting for learning gains, and in previous years, we would have gotten those learning gains.
That's the biggest difference.
And then the other one that is, and we knew it was coming, but I still think when it happened, I still was shocked. We do an amazing job, and Mr. Roland just walked in, and it's hard not to give him kudos because he was part of that group that did that, where we have middle school students, and I think we've got maybe as much as twenty percent of our middle school students are taking geometry and algebra in middle school, and they are doing phenomenal. Even some of our kids that, that are tougher, little tougher learners are taking it on, and because they're kind of in a middle school environment, where we, we tend to love them and pug them a little more than we do in high school, they tend to blossom on us. Those scores used to go to the high school and follow those students and their cowork groups to the high school, and then the high school would get, they would blend in with all the other students. Now, the only students that they're getting grades for are the students that don't get any grades for their algebra and geometry in middle school, which is basically our struggling math learners. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's, that's a huge impact to the high school, because it means that, and, and we've been doing a great job with Algebra one A, Algebra one B, Geometry A, Geometry B, that we're trying to do with those learners, and I commend your department for doing that. But, but this is a hit that we have no control over, but it's just changed the game for us, numbers-wise.
Yeah, we currently have about, I would say about thirty percent of our middle school students.
Thirty percent?
Yeah, because you figure it, most schools are A class is around three hundred, and we typically run about a hundred or so students, give or take ten in each of the schools. So we're accelerating about thirty percent of our students at the middle school level between algebra and geometry. And I heard the question earlier, and one of the things that we've done is that this summer, we had a, what we call a retreat for our administrators. Each, each school sent an administrative team to a planning session. We did a half-day on one day, and then we did a full day on the next. But basically, we took every piece of data that we had available to us, from state assessment data, to school formative assessment data, to discipline data, to attendance, to teacher grades, and we had graphic organizers for each school, that they would go through each graphic organizers, and analyze that data set, talk about the factors that contributed positively or negatively to that area. Say if it was the state assessment in ELA, grade six was not as high as we wanted. So that administrative team, they would sit down, they would look at their observation data, their evaluation data, and determine, you know, what, what occurred positively to affect that data, what occurred negatively, and then they came up with action steps for the upcoming school year, what they may do differently, or some things that they may continue to do. But they did that with every data piece that we have, they did it again with, like, if a school did formative assessment, like a teacher had a formative assessment, and they use some program like Study Island, they, they assessed that data and determined those factors again, you know, pro and con, and then came up with action plans. We did it with discipline and attendance. So, and each school started to write the school improvement plan based on this comprehensive review and analysis of data. We have another day coming up in, on July twenty-first, in the afternoon, in which we're gonna ask those schools to revisit those plans now that they've analyzed their data a little bit more, and come up with, you know, if they need to tweak those action steps or revise those action steps, they'll do it that day. And when we had those retreat days, it was great because we could use each other as resource, we know we have so much expertise within our county, teams were sharing with each other, sharing best practices, we had some share-out sessions, so we learned a lot from each other, we got a lot of detailed planning, because we sort of anticipated that with the, the changing assessment and the changing rigor, this was even before we got those scores, to know exactly where we were. We knew that, you know, we're in a transition phase, and anytime we've gone to a transition phase for standards, we've been very proactive in getting ready for those, we've been working on that about two years, and we knew once we got this data, we would have more planning and details to, to follow in. So I feel like we've, we've worked pretty hard already, we've got more work to do, more analysis, and, and more action plans, but I think we're on the right track of, of, of improving.
Okay. And I know Mr. Mullin said there are a lot of, there were a lot of good things that we can be proud of, too. I think Chris Turver Primary School improved, what, from a C to an A?
C to A.
From a C to an A.
Aye.
And so that was a great accomplishment, because.
It is.
To pursue a primary school.
I think they had the highest reading, or science scores, and tied for the highest science scores in the district, seventy, seventy some, seventy-four percent.
And our math scores across the district were, were pretty good. They were, you know, they were very good. We're around the top ten in the state with our math scores, when you look at growth, bottom quartile, and learning gains, and they've got some work to do in ELA, but we, we've identified those areas, and, and we've, we had some good, good plans in place, for example, like ELA, we've got a comprehensive staff development that has already occurred at elementary school, that's going to occur at the middle and high school. We've made tools that administrators can use to go in and identify best practices in ELA classes and give those teachers feedback. We've got Fast Bridge, which you guys approved for the secondary world, which is gonna give our teachers a better tool to identify specific reading problems that they may have, and we've seen from the FSA results at the elementary school using Fast Bridge, there's a strong correlation between what we're seeing in Fast Bridge and how they score on the FSA, so now we have that in the secondary world. So we've got some better tools coming in at the secondary level for ELA, so we're, we're moving in the right direction. Like I said, we, there's a lot of things we can be proud of, but there's some things that, you know, we, we want to be at the top, top that, and we're not quite at the top right now in a couple areas.
Yesterday, I was in Uplands, and I was thinking about grading and stuff, and for some reason, in two aisles that I went down, nobody was speaking English. There was mostly German, but other languages, and I thought, where am I? And I've been transported by Scotty to another country.
You need a choker?
Yeah, really. But my first thought was, oh my gosh, we're gonna have to deal with this at the high school level, if all the kids are speaking a different language. school level, if all the kids are speaking a different language other than what we're used to them speak. So always challenges, always challenges.
Yes, definitely.
I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thanks, sir. I'd like to just thank our officer that's here. I need to thank you every time. I appreciate you being here. And that's something I'd like for us to do, that when we see an officer, just thank them. Just hope and say thank you for what you do, because they put their life on the line every day. That, that's all.
We intend to throw Doug out in front of us.
At any time.
In all joking signs, we've been very grateful to have you here, too, Doug. It does add a lot to us, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have a couple things, just want to repeat what you said, I'm budgeting online because that came up in a meeting that I had, and then we were accused of taking it offline for some reason. Yeah, yeah. To hide something, it's there, and the body of evidence, they're both, they want everyone to go there and look at it in detail, read every single thing. And they called Tammy, and she'll explain the evidence, so we appreciate that.
Call the district. We're happy to provide anything or find, tell you how to get to it.
Absolutely, always happy to. Want to tell all of us, if you would share, Ms. Vergeroni will be out speaking at different groups, so she'll know what groups we've been to, and like, if, if I think, oh, I think I'll go over and speak with that group, and I caught my phone, Thomas has already done it, he'll need to speak with another group, because I know all of us are going to be out the next few weeks talking about the tax, about the surtax and stuff, and what it really is. And by the way, I was in another meeting, there was a guy sitting next to me, and he just read the paper, and had just heard someone who was at the same meeting who was saying negative things, and he, he got to me and says, you all have a great school system. Why would anyone want to support the surtax and make it even better? Y'all have a really great school system. And he was, he was from someplace in the north, and they had, I'm sure, good history, but he was very, very pleased with his system.
Was it a Rotary Club in the Palmetto that was? This is a no-brainer.
Really? So we have lots of support, and it's all for the children, except for if it's you or me or any of us sitting here, but it will benefit the children. A couple of upcoming things on Wednesday, July the 20th, at the Citrus County Council on the Legion Women Voters, a lot of forum. It's going to be, doors open at 5:00 PM, forum starts at 6:00 PM, as at the College of Central Florida. And I wanted to sort of build, how many of you, who, who can go, you'll be gone, once you can be gone.
What date is it again?
Uh, 20th, July, Wednesday, July 20th. And you, you two are out of town, Mr. Kennedy?
I think I'm in town.
Okay. So, Mr. Kennedy, you and I will...
And, and just so that we've asked the question, mainly not for us, but as much for the public, Mr. Bradshaw, since we have already voted on this, and there's nothing that we're going to vote on, is there any issue with two board members standing at the booth?
As far as we're concerned.
Yeah.
We've already voted on it.
Okay, that's, that's what I would have thought, too.
Yeah, y'all aren't going to have a discussion about anything, so.
We might have ice cream, which, you want sprinkles? No.
Well, if we're discussing it, though, if one person's asking us both questions, I mean, we can still answer the questions, right?
Individually, we can't. We cannot engage each other in a conversation.
It's not different if you want to.
And I believe that the state attorney has already issued those issues on that very issue.
I would not get into a discussion where you have someone saying, well, you know, this passes, you know, or you go to the board, or, you go to the...
Right.
What do you intend on doing?
Absolutely.
Something like that. But I think y'all can just, you know, the fact of the...
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
And also, on Thursday, July the 21st, the Board of Realtors, they're having a meet the candidates program, 5:30 to 8 o'clock, and the doors are going to open a bit before 5:00, like 5:00. We're going to have a table there where we can put literature, and we're not going to talk to anyone, or, you know, get, give a speech, but we can have a table there to pass out literature that explains some information on the taxes.
What date is that again?
It's Thursday, July the 21st. It starts officially, very early, 5:30, but it's set up at 5:00.
I hate to ask Ms. Vergeroni for more work, she's already doing so much, but maybe if we could give that to, to some of these dates, and then maybe we each look at an email that has those, and that way she'll know.
Right.
And she, and you can put it on there, like, on the 20th, right now it's intended that I'll, I'll attend and Linda will attend, that kind of thing.
And this, oh, we have who's going to attend? You and I will attend. Are y'all going to be out of town? Did I tell you to clear your schedule through mail? Left that out, listen. He's buying a wedding. Oh my gosh, yes you are, wow.
I am going to be on WYK tomorrow.
Oh, good.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
So good. We need somebody to come down and get you.
It'll be repeating, and it'll be on video. If, if you think of it, they'll give you a video of it, and if you get, you can get that to Chris or give it to somebody, and they'll get it to Chris, and then we can get it so that it re-broadcasts over and over.
And over.
And over. And over. Or just tell Chris to cut out that part. That's right. Let's edit it down for us. Thank you for doing that, that's a big deal.
Yes. This coming Friday, July 15th, at 1:30, there's going to be a meeting of the council, the commissioners, school board people, and each one from each group, and we're going to sit down and talk about what we wish to talk about, and from you, I need some of the topics that are, that are interesting to you, or topics you would like to have brought before that group from the school board's perspective. I know one certainly will bring, but anything else that you would like, if you have, have it written down, get between you, emailing with that information, I would appreciate it, and I'll be certain to bring up any of the issues that you'd like brought up, so.
And this isn't stuff that you'd like Tallahassee to do?
Well, it could.
It could be.
It could be something, because we...
Support our schools.
Yes, as, as a group.
I'd like to stop testing.
Amen.
Keep the spelling test on Friday, no more tests, I'm tired of them. Stop the testing, so.
Or I don't want it used in particular for anything other than diagnostic purposes and, and teacher value, and teacher determining.
Yes, okay, that's, that's not...
But there, there needs to get me over, I mean, you know, one of the things that's still frustrating is, in third grade, we have, the state does provide for portfolios and other options that we have with students, but it ends in third grade. And, and, you know, I believe that we've been told about, in Citrus County, 97% of our third graders are able to, to do that. Well, you know, we need that in high school, middle school, those other areas, so.
I'm going to stop, I just have a couple more things, but we have 5:00 presentation, the Citrus County Education Foundation update. Then at 5:15, we have, then we can be obvious, isn't it? Bit of smart.
Hello.
Hello.
How much money did you bring us?
And we have to be nice, especially nice to him than normal, because today is his last meeting, is it?
Or just finally say what you really want to say. No, get it all up, now, now it's...
I have a question, has Ms. Dorchman moved?
Yes, based on her house.
I, I hope it's old her house, I'm just wondering if she's still here, or she's gone.
She's moved out of the tent, my backyard. They are...
She's in Colorado right now.
Happily relocated in Colorado right now, and, and have plans to come back to the area for, letting her something here in the near future, but other than that, all the stuff is packed up and gone.
Sorry, thank you.
You're welcome. Now that we got the important stuff. Thank you again for having me. This is my last quarterly update for the Education Foundation. I wanted to, first of all, update you all on the executive director search. Obviously, as announced last month, we did make a hiring decision. We have hired Shonda Burdette to take over, and she's effective as of July 1st. She is now on the payroll and, and hit the ground running. I'm happy to announce that the transition so far has been smooth. All the major donors to the foundation have been notified, and the transition's been discussed with them. We have some meetings and things set up, which I'll continue to be involved with and make sure that our donor recognition and our donor stewardship doesn't fall off due to the change. The school district's been very helpful with it. They've transferred my email now to, before to Shonda's, so we don't have a loss or any things falling through the cracks, so she'll receive any communications that would have been sent directly to my K-12 email address. We're also doing that, and obviously taking our own steps with our websites and other things to make sure that the point of contact has all been updated. So we're hoping for a seamless transition, and any further inquiry can be directed to So really proud that she's stepped up to the plate. I'm sorry to have taken her and the foundation started, have taken her off of your hands as a, as a district employee, but I think she'll serve a great purpose in our role at the Education Foundation and do a tremendous job, continuing to grow support for you all and for the school district through service in the Education Foundation. So we're happy to have Shonda on our team. I'm going to be brief. I know typically when I do these quarterly updates, I have charts and hand you out stuff, but I, I wanted to keep that information brief today, because really what I wanted to do was to leave with a message on where I'd like to see some of the focus for the future, perhaps, of not only the Education Foundation, but the school district. So to get to the, the updated information, I just wanted to give you kind of some of our numbers. Currently, our unrestricted balance stands at $98,742.32. That is, though, at the last meeting, we had, we did approve a request from the school district for Alex, it's a mathematics tutoring program of $16,000, so that check will be cut and come out in the 98. And then we also had allocated up to $10,000 to cover the cost of the back-to-school one-to-one technology event that you all have going on with all the teachers here in August. So hopefully, we won't have to pay for the full $10,000. Hopefully, we'll be able to continue to get sponsorships and vendors involved in it, but we have at least set some of that money aside in case that is, it needs to be covered for the school district. So the 98's a little higher than what will actually be in our books come the start of August, but that as of today is our unrestricted balance. Our restricted balance, which includes things like scholarships, money that has already been allocated for the mini-grants, is $56,969.50. So all told, we have approximately $145,000 in the bank account at this point. Giving a review, now that we're at the end of the 2015-16 school year, our unofficial audit, but final financials, show that in programmatic expenditures, which includes everything from the mini-grants to the Galaxy of Stars event, we provided a direct support to the school district of $333,732.90.
Holy...
Over this, that's just this past school year. And again, as I'm sure you've seen or you've read in the paper, that brings our three-year total now since the start of the 13-14 school year over a million dollars. So really proud to have been a part of that, really proud to help lead the board to that type of success. And as you can see from where our balances are and where we give, every dollar and then some that comes in goes right back out to the school district that knows we support. So keep that in mind. We'll always entertain requests through the board, through the district for any funding requests, but we are at a bit of a low level for our unrestricted balance. We do have a reserve policy that kicks in a place around $62,000. So after those fundings we've approved, we are, we are teetering close to that. Hopefully, we have coupon book sales and other events in the near future that'll help rebuild the balance. But again, if you know anyone, want to let people know how they can support the school district and its programs, please feel free to share our information with them. So that being said, again, I, I'm not going to go through all the programs we funded this past year, because I know you want to get out of here by 6:00, but that information's readily available to you. If anyone has any questions about specific programs or funding initiatives by the Education Foundation, please let Shonda Burdette know, and she will provide you that information.
She'll enjoy saying that.
It's so nice. My shoulders just keep lifting. The only issue on the governance side that really still needs to be addressed, and I'm gonna, I apologize to Mr. Bradshaw, I tried to get an appointment with his office, and then I got so busy I couldn't follow up. But there is a matter that I, I will ask the board and the board attorney to look into regarding the designation of the Education Foundation. There's a statute in Florida that governs direct support organizations for educational institutions. There's a separate one for college and university levels, and then a separate one, and one that would apply to us would be for the public education system level. All told, since we were formed in 1988, this has played little to zero significance in our operations from a day-to-day basis. But recently, in several other counties, Alachua mainly, the state attorney's office in doing their audits have come down on some other counties on whether or not their education foundation is a direct support organization operating under the purview of the statute, or what's considered a non-direct support organization, which is just the local friend, the local public education foundation that supports the, the school that the school has designated. I viewed and I've reviewed our, as much information as I can, I view us as a non-direct support organization, and the reason I do so is because this board, to the best of my knowledge, as well as our own bylaws, don't follow to the T that statute. It would require things like you all voting annually to prove, approve our board membership, and it puts limitations on the district being able to give money through the Education Foundation, and that's really where it's come down recently. Won't affect this county much, but in other counties, as what happened in Alachua was, the school district was giving money to the Education Foundation there to pay for their audit each year. And the, they consider themselves to be a non-direct support organization. The school boards consider them a non-direct support organization, but there was never an official vote of the school board to say, this is a non-direct. So the state attorney's office decided, no, you're a direct support organization, so you stay other way. So until you say, until the school board says otherwise. And what the implication of that was now, not only did they have to refund the money for the audit, because the school district couldn't pay, you couldn't give money to YMCA to do their audit, you know, but they also needed to do a GAAP accounting audit instead of the audit, which is what we do, which is a, a, just a normal independent audit. So the cost of the audit, not only did they have to refund the money, but then they had to pay $10,000 for this year to have it. So it was, it had big implications for Alachua County, and for a foundation of our size, that could be significant as well. So I would ask that Mr. Bradshaw kind of look into that and give us, and we can maybe meet at your office and talk a little more in depth.
I mean, as you said, has that any attempt by the state to have control of these monies?
It's unclear, because the only money we get from the state as, as the Education Foundation, the allocation of that DOE, the appropriation, does not state that it can only be to direct support organizations. It specifically and clearly states that it can go to public education foundations in any of all of the Florida counties. So us being the only operating public education foundation in Citrus County, we, we're that designated regardless of whether we're DSO or a non-DSO. So the reasoning is a little unclear at this point, and other states, or other counties that have, that have had to address this with the state, and where it's coming up is in the audit reports, in the, in the final reports. And they're getting, you know, sanctioned, but other than Alachua, it really hasn't cost anyone money, it just is really a clarification that needs to take place. And why I also think it's important to be designated non-DSO, first of all, you all are in trouble for your non-compliance on the oversight side of it, but also in having a non-DSO status as a vendor, we're not really an arm of you, we're not directly under you. And there's questioning now whether or not a DSO would be subject to Florida sunshine laws. And there's been no definitive answer by the Attorney General on the matter, but if it did, the cost that that would incur on the Education Foundation, the need for public notice and all of that, would probably severely cripple their ability to operate moving forward. So I would ask that, even if it's just a simple, essentially, if we were formed as a DSO originally, all it's going to take is a vote of the board just to say they're not, that they're now a non-DSO, and once it's in the minutes, that's all the state requires from Alachua County, is once it got in the minutes. We could do so with a memorandum of understanding saying, you're non-DSO as the statute reads, but you're already friend of the educator, the education system here, and we designate you as our support organization, just not under the statute. So I, I mean, it'd be, essentially, it takes some sort of resolution on that regard, but we'll get into that a little further after I've evened Mr. Bradshaw. And if this was never established as a DSO, it's a moot point. I just want to be sure that we're clear on that, so you all and the Education Foundation don't somehow get a bad audit report or get further inquiry that would require a cost.
Yes.
So the school board designa-
So the school board designates an organization in order to receive the money from the license plates? I mean, you're saying we should be, you should be a non-direct service organization, but yet we can still designate you. What's the purpose?
Not necessarily designate is probably a strong word. Just I was just saying a memorandum of understanding that we are an education foundation set up for the support of the school district and that you all view us as such. Just to continue, just a partnership understanding really. So if people are asking, you know, who do I give through for the school system? You know, we have a memorandum of understanding with the school system.
But what legal criteria is it to receive the money from license plate sales?
Again, that's the license plate and it's the, and it's the state-matching DOE. And again, there's no requirement that we be designated as the support organization. The way the law is written is that if we are a public education foundation and that county may receive it. So by you, by a memorandum of understanding or you designating or agreeing that we are that organization here in Citrus County, it could preclude another organization from popping up and making a claim for those monies, but which hasn't really been an issue obviously up to this point. But that's really the only, that's one benefit I would see of doing it that way. That's what Alachua County's done, is they've done the vote to be a non-direct.
But it costs them money to get to that point.
It costs them money in having to, they had to comply with the attorney general's report for the year, which was get the money back that you got and pay for your own audit, which is a higher expense audit. So it did cost them money in that regard. There wasn't a fine levied, there wasn't an issue, the board wasn't sanctioned or anything, but they had to make this legal distinction in order to clearly operate either as a non-DSO or a DSO. The issue with DSOs as well is that, and what I was starting to get to, was the reason that another county, I'm not blanking on the name of, but they essentially received a negative report on an audit because the district gave them money to pay for a specific program, which they were running and operating. And the, as a DSO, the state viewed that as essentially the school board giving money to itself because it was under statute. So by being a DSO, again, you're actually in a worse, you're in a less advantageous place because if you all wanted the Education Foundation to take on a mentoring program or take on some programs specifically and you allocated money in your budget to do so, we could do it as a non-DSO because we're a vendor just as you give money to the YMCA to build a pool or other organizations to provide programs. But you can do it as a direct support organization.
If you're a DSO, would you also fall under Red Book restrictions? Because I'm thinking, there's a lot, I guess I'm thinking like right now, there's a lot of stuff that you all do that helps us out because it falls outside of that.
That's the problem. There hasn't been a lot of clarification on those yet. So it's kind of new and, as I said, you know, in the now 26 years, 27 years since the Education Foundation was formed, it's never been an issue. And we've been a member of this state consortium of education foundations for well over a decade. And it's never been an issue up until about three years ago when these audit reports started pointing out this issue. And this, just this past few months, when Alachua really got hit by it. So I just want to...
And we have a policy right now, and I know the two connect, but I think there was a policy that we're, that's running through policy informs or something having to do with, maybe we passed it and I apologize if I'm forgetting, where there, if something was over, we raised the limit of monies that you, that the Education Foundation could directly give to the school district without having to go through board approval.
Yeah, yeah, you guys did.
And the only thing I'm thinking with that is, again, if there is, if somehow there's a connection that an auditor wanted to make between, you know, without having that other memorandum of understanding or that would, that could muddy that up, I would...
I need to, just a minute, just a little bit.
Probably not, yeah.
Please work around, is that going? Okay.
So that's just, I'd just say that, again, probably warrants again your suggestion that we need to just look at the...
Yeah, and I don't think, you know, and that may be an area that it just hasn't been addressed yet, but I don't think there'd be any limitation. It'd just take board approval, which was always happening for the last part anyways. I mean, anytime we had a check, Karen Staub, check who's helped us with that for the last few years, make sure it gets to Linda to be on your consent agenda and do you guys approve of the money that's expended?
And it says specifically, public schools, right?
Yes, yeah. So our bylaws clearly still state and will forever state that we are a public education foundation set up for support of the Citrus County school system. It's for kindergarten through 12th grade public education. So it's aligned with what a direct support organization is, but it doesn't have the same legal apparatus. And the, really, from everything that the counties that are DSOs are, the trend now is to become non-DSO because the hurdles that they're facing as DSOs are far outweighing. Really, the only benefit, if you read the statute, is that you all would be able to pay the salary and benefits of our executive director. Because otherwise, you couldn't pay, you know, another just not-for-profit inter area. You can't pay their salary essentially for no reason. But you can treat a DSO as an employee of the school district, but that hasn't happened here in Citrus County really at any point. So we don't have the benefits. We would just have all the costs of being a DSO. So we'll revisit...
A non-DSO, the executive director couldn't be, is that...
Could not be paid. So you couldn't pay directly the salary of Ms. Burdette moving forward as a non-DSO. You could provide the kind type of stuff that you're providing now because those are, those are costs, but the, you can't pay salaries or benefits of them unless we're a DSO. Now, you could pay for a program. So if she's operating a specific program that the school wants to fund and we're a direct vendor, you could pay that portion of her salary that she works on that program, just as you would hiring outside tutors or hiring some other, you know, so you could do that. But it wouldn't be, we're giving her a salary of X amount of dollars a year to run the education foundation. That would, you would be precluded unless it's a DSO. Any questions on that confusing matter? So I'm going to stay involved in that and try to get that solved. I think my lawyerly skills may come in a little handy in just trying to make...
Shonah's shoulders, you know, just relax a little.
That'll probably be pro bono too.
It always is. You know, I want to see this foundation, you know, survive and be strong. And, you know, to be subject to sunshine lines, to be subject to some of the onerous burden of the things that may come down the pipeline if the, you know, for whatever reason that's gotten the states here about public education foundations, I think would really hurt their opportunity to build in this community. So I'll continue to help with that matter. The last item I did want to talk about, and I'll try to keep it brief, but one thing that, probably the greatest shortcoming, the area that I wasn't able to really build the programmatic changes and see the effect in my short tenure here was on mentoring. We've had, just in the last two years, as the board is well aware, particularly at the middle school to early high school years, some very traumatic events. We've had suicides, we've had suicide attempts, we've had shooting at a school, attempted suicide. The issue with young men, particularly in the formidable years of middle school, is something that really affects a small percentage of the school, but has a huge tremendous effect. Last year, I tried to begin a program where we would find male mentors from the community to come in and have lunch one to two times a month with a group of students at the middle school level that have been targeted by the guidance department as at risk. Whether it not grades, but behavioral, social, home life, I was able to be paired up with several students and it was extremely rewarding. But I was one person at one school with a group of four to five students. I, from the numbers on this, we have 1,620 male students at our middle school level, so sixteen, over 1,600 students. For those 1,600 students of our registered volunteers here in Citrus County, which is phenomenal, we have over 1,300 registered volunteers, which is fantastic. Of that, 2.1% are males at the middle school level. We have 28 male mentor, or excuse me, not even mentors, volunteers. We have 28 registered male volunteers across four schools, two of which have three or less at their school. That's one volunteer, male volunteer for every 58 male students in the middle school level. As you all know, and as you may remember, and as I remember very well, that is a very tumultuous time, especially for male development. That's a time when you're really developing what you're going to be, what type of path your psyche is very, very much in a state of flux at that time. And for these students who have no home, strong, positive male role models, really, they have to look to their school. We have the smallest percentage of our male teachers at the middle school level. We have the smallest percentage of male volunteers at the middle school level. And I think it's imperative if this district wants to address the issue with the mental health and with not only suicides and depression, but also vagrancy and violence and other issues that come out of these students. We have to get them at these years before they get into high school, before they become lost cause. And there's a pretty famous Frederick Douglass quote that it's much easier to build a broken child than to repair a lost man. So I think, you know, that's one thing where I've made opportunities. I've tried to get members of this community and to be a part of it. But, you know, we'll fund it, we'll pay for every lunch the person goes to. But we want to get these males who have succeeded, who aren't their teachers or their guidance counselors or administrators, because they see those as authority figures. They just need someone to talk to, be able to share common stories with. And, you know, and I'll be candid, the reason I am very much is because I have suffered from depression since I was 13 years old, pretty severe. If it wasn't for people reaching out to me, I don't know if I would be here. So I just think we could do much more than we're doing. And I know you all have to look at it from a holistic perspective in the district. But these individual students that are getting lost in the cracks, not through lack of teachers trying, but lack of community involvement and proper understanding of the difficulties they're facing. I think that's something we can solve here in Citrus County so we don't get those calls about what's going on at a school in a lockdown. And we can resolve that issue before it ever starts. So I hope this board takes that under consideration. I hope you look to maybe pass some policies or programs that would help benefit this sector of what I believe and see as an underserved portion of our student body. And I hope you guys take that to mind. I hope the Education Foundation continues to build this program and makes it the success that I see it can become. And I will gladly continue to still be involved with the program and others like it. So thank you for your time. Thank you for everything you guys continue to do for our students. And please feel free to give me a call if you will need anything else. They'll be around and Amy will be on the board. So I'm sure I'll be at all the events that I hope you guys attend. So thank you all very much. And unless there's any questions or statements.
I'd just like to say thank you, Stephen, for all you've done.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you.
Stephen, I just, I know you gave some impressive numbers, but what I don't know that a lot of people know is that I believe you accomplished maybe more in your first year than had been done, with all due respect to the great things that were done previously in even just the previous decade almost of the Education Foundation. You've made a legacy for students. And aside from saying thank you, I say let's get that mentoring program off the ground. And I am there to be in any support you can. I think that, you know, no time wasting. Let's do that.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, I always was impressed with the way you presented yourself. You had this sense of confidence and professionalism that I think represented the foundation very well. And you were in front of big groups of people to talk about programs. And you were always very easy to listen to when you delivered your message. So I think that professionalism really does help promote this whole lot of concept of an education foundation. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I love it, Stephen. You speak whatever it is you're speaking about. I want to do it right now, get it started on it.
Good. Well, wonderful. Thank you all. Thanks for your time. And I'll be off to the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen.
I have just a couple things. I want you to note, I want you to note that a PowerPoint, I think it's probably Mr. Tammy if you were doing, but a PowerPoint will be presented on July 20. It's going to be a big looping for an hour. It's the PowerPoint.
Oh, I just had a couple things, but Tammy was a big part of that. So I want to make sure, and Mr., he's not here, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Mulligan have been the big...
Okay, because it'll be presented, looping, and people will be able to see it when they go on the 20th. And tomorrow morning, I'll be with the Citrus County Council and present some information on our tax requests. Any other things? Okay, then if we have nothing, we're adjourned.